I just think it's, there's two sides to both stories. I just think this is sort of out of our realm here. We don't, I don't think it really makes too much of a difference if we come down on either side of this as far as this board goes. And so I would just assume pass on this and table it if that's, that would be my, my feeling.
I could just mention something before we get too far into it. And I know Peter here, was here a couple of weeks ago to speak with you. I'm a colleague of Peter's. My name's Bonnie Simmons. I live in Belgrade. I've lived here for about 25 years. And I was talking with Peter today. He's doing a presentation for the Waterville City Council. And he's talked with Oakland as well. Oakland suggested that we have a public meeting to be able to discuss it more fully and more detail because I think it takes a little while to really fully understand and appreciate all of the moving parts with carbon fee and dividend.
Sure.
So I think, I mean, I will just say that the main reason in my mind for getting endorsements from municipalities and organizations is to support something that will help us get off fossil fuels ultimately and have a renewable energy future. I could say more about that, but I think it would be better to hold until we have a chance for a really full discussion and a full understanding of it. I don't think that the, the few papers that you've received were really adequate. And I know that means more time, but I think it's, it's worth supporting if you're interested in a clean energy, a renewable energy future. And I understand what you're saying, you know, what difference does it make if, if the town of Belgrade signs on to this?
Sure.
I believe CCL, Citizens Climate Lobby, has about 1,000 endorsements now. And as you know, Portland and Bangor have signed on in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And I don't know all the other towns, but 50 editorial boards, 100 towns and many organizations. The Main Lake Society is one. And I, I feel it's just a way of us getting behind something that has some value and making a stand.
I kind of leave it up to you. We, to be honest, we were gonna, we were gonna let this, we'd let this fly, just pass over tonight.
Why don't we just table it and tell?
Yeah, well, my, my thought is gentlemen has come.
Yeah, if I could have a full amount of time, I'll just make a few comments and I'll leave if you want me back at a later date. I'd be glad to do that. It came down from Bangor, so.
Oh. Yeah, so, yeah, I thought you came from a distance.
That's no problem. That's the way these things work out. I'm the governor's technical advisor on energy. I don't get involved with the politics. That's why I'm specifically the technical advisor. There's 92,000 people that are employed at the, at the DOE and I don't know how many in environmental protection, but it's, it's big. So it's a very big, complex matter. So I appreciate any communities that say we want to hear both sides or as many sides as you can. So here in Maine, I'll just make a few points that we're a unique state. We use 100 times more oil for heat and transportation than we use to make all our electricity. And if we're going to get lower CO2, we have to go after oil in the transportation and heating industry, not electricity. Maine has the fourth cleanest electricity in the whole United States. 10% of our carbon footprint is from generation of electricity. So if you have products that are environmentally sound like windmills and solar panels, to displace electricity with just a little bit of carbon in it in this state, then it doesn't give you a very big, a very big punch. Now, the governor's, one of the governor's bills that he put in, and it's been working out real well, was the heat pump bill where you use one clean watt of electricity, put it in the heat pump, you get three watts of heat out, and that mitigates oil. So for every million dollars' worth of heat pumps we put in, you get, you'd need $8 million worth of solar panels to give you the same thing. So those are the kinds of things that I could talk about, just to give you an opening here. And I think that you would enjoy knowing that Maine is different. A solar panel in Maine to mitigate CO2 is only about one-sixth as effective if it was in Oklahoma because they had so much more carbon. So why does the governor want to go after oil is because that's where the carbon is, you know? So anyways, so I'll be glad to come back at a, at another time if you want and, or another, another day. That's, that's fine. Just want to help bring information and as far as what you guys want to do politically, good luck.
Thank you very much for coming down. Do appreciate that.
Thanks a lot.
Denny has a question.
I just wanted to point out that I'm sorry for, I had briefed the chairman before that I wasn't aware that Jim was coming down. And so I had briefed him on that fact and didn't think there'd be a discussion, so it may be appropriate for you to table it. I apologize for, I know that Penny had told me that she'd asked him, he just didn't get the information, is all.
I didn't need.
Yeah, okay.
I do like, I do like the idea of, one of the problems I had personally, and I think perhaps some of the other selectmen had, is that a couple of, a couple of people sit around making decisions for the town. And maybe it is a good idea to have a meeting, an information meeting. And if some, perhaps you can.
With both parties, yeah.
With both parties.
And I appreciate your comment about sharing information because that's what this is really about. I'm certainly not here to convince anybody about climate change or anything else, but just to open a discussion and see if there's some value in it. And if you think so, then perhaps you would sign on.
If you would like, it's up to you, the board, for me to set up a discussion of this type sometime in March or whenever. I can do that or you can dispose of it when you want.
Well, if we do that, it should be sometime after the town meeting, of course. But if Oakland, if the other, the other towns are already on this path, maybe we could get.
Let them know it.
We'll sit in the back of the room.
Right. I contacted, I haven't set it up yet, of course, because I want to see whether anybody has their meetings, but I contacted the police department, asked about using the, the room in the police department in Oakland, Cascade Room.
Denny, why don't, why don't you just?
Work it out.
You'll work it out, see what, and let us know.
So I'll make a motion, we table this till a later date.
Motion made.
I'll second that motion.
Made and seconded, table it. For the discussion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Penny.
There's no other discussion, all those in the table?
Thank you.
Now, for the rest of the meeting, if anybody wants to talk, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Don't launch right into it. What's that?
I was going to bring that to you.
Yeah, nice, I noticed that. All right, next item. We're into new business.
Yeah, we got Ernie.
Oh, it says new business here, but it is old business.
No, old business.
Okay. Okay, old business, somebody named Ernie Martin. Who is this guy? Mr. Martin, floor is yours.
Okay, Denny, you gave everybody a copy of the agreement.
Yeah, this is all about the state, city, state agreement. And I've given you copies of what I understand is the final agreement. The one change in there, it had the transfer of the ownership of the filters and all of that to the town. And then there's a letter that I put on your desk that I got this forming that would be an agreement between the town and DRCA and the BLA in terms of their agreement to replace those filters at their cost if needed be. And it's estimated that they'd be once every 10 years maybe on the average. So that's the, and Ernie's here to answer any other questions that you may have or other people may have about the agreement. He'd like to have that signed sometime in, prior to, to the end of the first week of March, I guess. And we discussed this a lot last, at the last meeting. I think we had mostly questions answered. The one question I had, Ernie answered today, was whether or not the memorial, the Veterans' Memorial was in the right of way. He said that we stayed away from all that stuff.
Yeah, we don't need to get into that stuff.
Absolutely.
That's a whole nother can of worms. Basically, the packet in front of you guys have been down through it. The biggest thing is obviously a Penex A for, for the town, showing the town of Belgrade's share of the project. And then obviously you have the Friends share in there as well. Then the MLA stuff is all related to those prison, prison filters, or I call them overgrown coffee filters, which Mike likes better than the prison filters. What it is with those is that we're going to clean those out annually or as needed. Obviously, in a solid priority area, there shouldn't be a whole lot of sediment getting in there, but the department will look at those. And it's the first time we've used them. So it's, it's a learning curve for the department, but the manufacturer does warranty them for 10 years. So say if the department goes in and vacuums out that filter and it breaks, that's a warranty item. They'll replace that for nothing up in that 10-year period. So other than that, I, I think it's a, it's a good deal. We didn't have to do it, but I think it's, it's a good way to try to show that we're looking at environmental issues to try to enhance, you know, what pollutants get into. Obviously, you have two resources that are close to the road, so I think it's a good opportunity to see how, how that works.
If it turned out to be a complete bust, what's the backup plan?
Pull them out.
And just leave them without filters?
Yep. Yep, which our, which our, our basins have catch basins in the bottom of and they just have to be maintained and cleaned out, you know? So it's, it's a little better application. It's, it obviously gets the sediment before it gets into the bottom of the basin. So we'll see how they go.
Questions? Yes, Jack?
No, unless it's been changed since I read it, I don't have the authority to find out, do you? I would like to hear clarification about the town's responsibility for maintaining the sidewalk free of snow lines or rebuild sidewalk free of snow lines, and also responsibility for essentially policing the use of the designated parking spaces. What responsibilities does the town take on if the town doesn't happen now?
Yeah, basically, you did have some form of sidewalk out there in the before. You're responsible maintaining that.
Not for ice and snow. Maybe we were responsible, but we didn't do it.
Yeah, in a lot of, in a lot of towns, like I'll take, I'll take Portland, they're responsible for plowing their sidewalks. Some towns don't plow them. Some towns put it on the businesses, the homeowners, et cetera, who's ever in that particular corridor. Like you look at Hollowell, that's in a big snowstorm. The business owners are out in front of their, have, they're out in front of their business, shoveling the snow out of the park, out of the, out the front of the sidewalk, and then the city will come along and clean that off. So each town is different. I guess my suggestion would be to look at what other towns ordinances are related to the winter cleanup on the sidewalks. Obviously, from a maintenance standpoint, the Friends of Belgrade Village have reached an agreement with the, with the town to pay for any future maintenance costs to the sidewalks. But as far as ordinances go, that's really up to each local town or city to develop.
There's something we.
Under this, under, sorry.
Go ahead.
Under this contract, if the town does not maintain the sidewalks, can the local citizen go to court and ask that that be enforced?
That's a question well above my pay grade because that's, that's more of a legal question than it is a design question. That would probably be something that Denny could check in with town legal counsel, but I'm not sure of that answer.
We, we have time to work out a, a plan anyway before this, before the sidewalks are in, available to be plowed, so.
Sure.
We have to think about what ordinances we need.
As far as the parking ordinance goes, again, that's, that's relying, relying upon, you know, what the town would like to do with those parking spots. We're going to stripe them, you know, whether or not you want to go in and put two-hour signs, call it two-hour parking, loading and unloading zones or stuff like that. That would be another town, loadings that could, could be developed.
Yeah, how about enforcement though?
Again, that's on the town.
That's on the town.
Unless it impacts, unless it impacts flow of traffic, then it becomes a state police or a county sheriff will have to step in.
Did you want to add to that?
Well, what I was going to say, also, the county sheriff or the state police will enforce parking as I understood that, these from previous discussions.
If you have, if you have an ordinance and, but that's, that's relying upon the ordinance. If there's nothing there for them to really enforce, other than staying within the white lines and not impeding traffic, it's, it's really a, a local, a local issue. It gets complicated. Every town has a different ordinance and different way of doing things, so.
Staying within the white lines is going to be a brand-new experience.
It will be. Staying off everybody's front lawn would be a real easy choice, right?
Howard.
Will the state continue to strike or is that going to be now our cost?
Yeah, we'll strike that.
And in subsequent years?
Yep.
Does that include the no parking areas that we may want to put in?
Uh, that'll be discussion with the region engineer once you get that established, Denny. And I would, I would recommend, once you get ordinances established, you contact the region two office and sit down with the region engineer to go over all those, so he's aware of the responsibilities.
Anything else? Anything you want to add, Ernie?
Just let me know if you have any further questions. Like I said, a lot of this is boilerplate stuff, and some of the stuff doesn't pertain, but we've, we've just touched upon, obviously, the biggest issues that are in there. And that project advertised last Wednesday. It'll open up two weeks from tomorrow, and I think it'll be a good bidding climate for this particular project. Hollowell opens tomorrow, so that'll probably take one of them off the candidate list, list for, for this project. And then just briefly, contractor's going to clear the trees and then he's going to stay away until Labor Day to give utilities enough time to relocate all the utilities, which is a key element here. There will be a little shock once all those trees are gone, just to warn you.
A little shock.
Because you're going to look at them today and they'll be gone tomorrow, so I'm sure it'll be a different look all summer long.
The same contractor is doing the construction, taking the trees out?
No, contractor will have a subcontractor.
Okay, but I mean, it's in the cover, the same contractor?
Correct.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that we did have a meeting with the Belgrade Lakes, your environmental guy came down. And could you speak a little bit about what you envision a meeting with the contractor and the resident engineer to be?
Yeah, what that's related to is, is the erosion control methods during construction and, and monitoring. Typically, we have a pretty good erosion control method in our contract, which contracts are supposed to submit erosion control plan to the department, which we're going to improve it, and it's up to them to monitor that. And obviously, our resident engineer will be part of that observation. We also have environmental coordinators that'll come through periodically, and Peter Newkirk is a gentleman that was out here. He will obviously go through time, the time here and there just to observe as well. I don't anticipate anything that's really needed at this time. I'm guessing probably prior to Labor Day, Denny will probably need to, if there's an interest, to have a sit-down meeting at the job trail or whatever with MLA and go over, you know, the plan. It's, it's a short distance and really probably 200 feet, probably in critical area of the project. The most part, the project is pretty much out of harm's way. Obviously, unless there's a big rainstorm during construction, then make sure we got soap booms, soap booms in the catch basin areas, protect those. But other than that, I don't see anything extravagant needed here.
Anything else?
No, the only other thing that.
Jack. Sorry.
The only other thing is then we'll need to get approval for you to sign this for you folks, or you guys all want to sign.
Did you want to discuss this at all?
And the letter, well, if you're signing this, right, if you agree with this.
We're talking, okay, you're not talking about the letter, you're talking about the contract.
The contract is with the city, state, or stupid in the state. That's one thing that has to be signed. They want it signed before the end of March, the first part of March, so we can sign this after the next board meeting if you want a chance to look at it. And then the letter has to be assigned at or before this is signed, so that you guys are assured that BLA and DRCA have that agreement in place for them maintaining the filters. So those are the two things that we can, we can wait until the next meeting or it'd be a central topic.
I got a question on it anyways.
Go ahead.
What, this amount of money for the town share is more money than was appropriated at town meeting, correct? How can we sign this until after this goes to town meeting to get the final approval? I mean, if, if, if it fails at town meeting, we're responsible for that.
What I think you're speaking to is, is the issue of the $60,500.
Yes.
We have roughly $40,000 in, in the fund to pay for that portion. And then we were going to put that in to the warrant this year, and you, and I think you pulled that out for next year. And so there's a $20,500, excuse me, amount that we would have to raise from the town. And that would have to be passed through the, the next town meeting warrant. Well, I don't anticipate that that would fail. You raised the question of what if? And what if is a good question. I mean, my, like I say, I don't anticipate it to fail, especially after all, all the money was put in.
I mean, that's my heartache. I mean, I've thought a lot about that after we made the decision the other night and go, wow, you know, I don't know, I'm not even sure it's legal to sign that, sign it without the town's approval.
Well, the, the board has already signed agreements to move forward on the project.
I understand that, but this is money we're talking about.
Yeah, it's all about.
I mean, we're talking taxpayers' money.
Yeah, yeah.
The plan is to put about half down now and balance next year.
Right, and the, and the point I think that Ricky's raising is whether or not you can go forward with an uncertainty as to whether or not the town will approve it the next town meeting.
That's exactly. I mean, after you do step, you get thinking about it and go, wait a minute, maybe that's not even right, you know? I think we need a legal opinion on that, but I don't know about you guys, what you guys think, but I'd like to hear one.
Well, we can pay for a legal opinion, but my, my view is that the first decision that was made was, well, was really just kind of thrown out there, and we got an approval for $40,000 or $5,000, and there was no opposition. And I don't really understand any reason why there would be any opposition to having to pay another $20,000 because the project was extended out and the cost is more, and now we know roughly what the cost is going to be. So the only, the only thing that is really in jeopardy is this select will rule in jeopardy if the voters didn't approve it. We signed for it, we'd have to go good for it. I guess I'm not concerned about that. I think the voters will more than likely, I would say 99% sure that the voters are going to approve $20,000.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue, but it's a valid question.
Well, you know what? If nobody's got a problem with it, I'm fine with it, but I, I just, you know.
I think, I think you're right. It's a, it's a question, it's a valid point, but I think also it's been discussed and it's not a secret from the town. They know that what's coming.
I understand it.
And I think, I personally have been willing to take that chance. Jack, I have a contract for you.
$20,000, that's the amount in question, isn't it?
Approximately $40,000, but we're going to take $20.
When is the, when is the last payment due?
2019.
When?
It'll be in June.
After the 19 town meeting.
Town meeting, yes. It's always set up.
So there are two town meetings to go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
Before that payment's due.
I guess one other point I'd like to just, we know that we have the discretion of sending, spending a certain amount of money ahead of time, even though we haven't raised it. So I guess we might fall under that, but if you want us, I, I just think it's kind of to spend legal, ask for legal opinion on this. You're right, Rick. We really shouldn't be signing for something that hasn't been approved by the voters. We also have leeway to sign for things in advance, knowing that it's going to go over with the border and.
I don't think there'll be any problem, but I just, you know, I just, when I put my name on something, I want to make sure we're right.
Well, we know where to come get the money.
I know, and that's what I'm worried about.
Says the man who's leading the board.
I'll, I, I can get the legal opinion. I don't think it'll take that long.
Probably can get it from.
I'm pretty sure that what Ernie said is, is correct.
Probably can get it from the MMA.
And for, we've discussed this whole issue in town since 2000, more definitively since 2011 or '12, and I think the town is, but again, that's enough.
I think you're right, but I just, you know, I get time to think and I get dangerous.
Howard.
Is this even a hard number?
No, right now it's based off our engineers' estimate, and I was going to say that, obviously, when the bids come in, the true number will be there.
I mean, the hard number's going to be in, in when, in when the bid's, March?
In a couple of weeks. We'll, we'll have, two weeks from tomorrow, bids open. Then it usually takes us a day or two to digest the numbers and figure out what that actual cost is.
But this is going to be signed before that bid comes in?
Yep. Well, it'd be, it'll be, it'll be March. First week in March. And towns do this all the time, and I, I don't disagree with your concerns, but based off the dates that we have here, that's kind of why we split them over two fiscal years, so towns have a chance to raise money, because this, this is all based off purely estimate. No actual cost is here. If it was actual cost, then probably be even more of a concern on your end if this is what you truly know. You know, because sometimes bids come in lower, you know? I'm hoping on this one because I think the climate's going to be good and there's enough space in between seasons to get this one done, you know? But there's still a lot of uncertainty out there.
And the other thing is the town does have five days to review that and move to, to decide whether they want to move forward or not, once the bid's.
I'm fine with it. Spend a lot of time on it. All right. Anybody else?
Obviously, I'm not going to have a, I don't want you guys to sign the agreement until you've seen the, the real numbers.
Oh, okay. So I thought it was March 7th, but it could be any of them.
Anybody care to make a motion that we, I'll make a motion, that we agree to the contract and give Denny authority to sign for the town?
I'll second that one.
Yeah, I guess so.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, 4-0.
Don't waste money on legal.
So as soon as I get the raw numbers, I will get them.
I won't sign it. You'll be getting a report before anything's.
Yeah, I want to make sure you guys have the actual numbers before Denny signs it, just so you can see the real numbers.
Okay. Now, do you want to talk about the letter?
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hey, Charlie. If you want.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, this letter essentially, as I understand it, is essentially commits in writing the agreement that the BLA and the DRC has made with the town that for the replacement of the filters, they would take on the responsibility to pay for the cost of replacement and maintenance, I guess, of that, of that filters after their 10-year warranty.
Pretty much, yeah. The idea is that MDOT will clean them. If they tear them during the cleaning, they're supposed to replace them. And if for any other reason, we'll, we'll pick it up.
And the warranty will cover them for 10 years.
That's, that's what we have in writing from the vendor. It's a new product. It's been out for a couple of years, and we had a demonstration, you know, video a week or so ago, and, and correspondence with the person, you know, who runs the company. And, you know, I think they're trying to make their customers happy right now. Hopefully, they're in business in 10 years, so.
Yeah, let's hope.
Right.
Are you going to take care of it if they're not?
We, yes, because our name's on it.
Because that'll be outside the warranty.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement.
You've got Dennis authority to sign it?
I'll second that.
Well, they're going to sign it.
Yeah, no, we have.
Time, you have time, Charlie.
Hang on, Howard.
Just, just clarify for me, if you would, Charlie. The, the devices that they're putting in, the bases that they're putting in will function to some degree without these filters, right?
Yes, yes.
So if the company, just crazy scenario, but the company goes out of business.
Yes.
Obviously, there's no way to replace them. We're not, we're not going to have to be replacing entire catch basins.
No, no.
That's what I, that's basically what I asked her.
Worst, worst case is they're catch basins. And that's kind of what Ernie was saying.
That's what I thought.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. There's a lot, by the way, there's a lot of interest in this technology because of the interest in maybe wiring a lot of lakes and things like that. They're very interesting, seeing it succeed.
Good. Anything else before we vote? Is there, there is a motion.
Yep, it's already, we ready to vote.
Ready to vote. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Four zero. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, appointments.
I'll make a motion.
Dan Newman.
I'll make a motion, we accept this.
I'll second that motion.
Made and seconded to accept Dan, renew Dan Newman on the budget committee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
That was it.
That was it, okay. Uncollectible taxes.
If you remember at the last meeting, I brought forward the recommendation of the assessor that we have you vote to declare these unsecured warrants and take it off the, taken out of the overhead. This is essentially what he said, to ask for written information, this is what he provided.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Made and seconded, made and seconded to accept it, any discussion?
Well, I have a question. Does this just recur on a yearly basis, or is there a way to...
No, 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 no. These are trailers that are no longer there.
Sure.
They're not taxable, you can't collect taxes on them.
I get that, I just, how do we prevent this from happening in the future, or can we...
Well, trailers that are, say someone says, look, can I use your property?
Sure, yeah.
All right? So they bring their trailer in.
Sure.
That trailer is taxable.
Sure.
The assessor will assess the taxing, et cetera. If, and when the trailer's moved, they're supposed to apply to the town to get a permit.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Sometimes they're not moved in broad daylight, or even if they are, they don't permit the permit.
Sure.
So that's when the trailer leaves, and suddenly, there's nothing to collect taxes.
I mean, we could chase them, we could levy a...
Well, if you know where they went.
Whatever, but it'd be a waste of time, right?
Essentially, he told me that this problem is not an unusual problem from many towns.
Sure.
So that's...
We haven't had much of it going.
No, I think these are, this is the first time I've heard.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I would like to have seen as a dollar amount is not necessarily...
Well, I put that in the last, I put those amounts in.
The last...
The last paper you had.
Right here.
Right here, they are.
Yes.
How many trailers are we talking about?
Four.
So how did these trailers get moved? Because the fact is, you have to come in, you don't apply for a permit, you have to come and pay the tax, and whoever's moving that has to show proof of the tax being paid when they move it to another location.
Yeah, and when they don't come in...
So how did that get done?
Well, that's a good question, because when they don't come in, you can't verify, you can't...
There's no way you can get away with it. You can't move it to another town. You cannot move it to another town and put it in another town, because that other town requires you to come in and show that you have paid the tax on that.
I know that you understand that, and I get it, but I don't know how to enforce that, because they don't come in. If you want, I suppose we can find out, I don't know where these trailers went.
Where are those trailers located? What was the location of these trailers? Just curious.
There were Frederick French, Leanne Rose, and Hal.
See that one?
Two trailers with Hal, they were just destroyed.
Yeah, and I think that one of French's was, too.
So those were destroyed?
Yeah.
So that's right off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Leanne Rose, that was over on Barnett Way.
I have no idea. It's on map four, 128, so...
Barnett Way, yeah. Okay.
That's probably how they got destroyed, it is.
Anything else?
On that one.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded.
Yep.
All those in favor? Four, nothing, four zero. Thank you. Warren, you got the warrant, can you read it?
Warren number 20, $548,286.93.
I'll make a motion, accept that.
Seconded, made and seconded to accept it, any discussion?
I got a couple. Figure as you would.
Okay.
Check number 16728 on Augusta Fuel.
Yeah.
We got, in fact, Ernie picked it up, too. Well, you're going to have a lot on there, I would say, so.
What page?
I'm on page number one. It looks like the center fire station, looks like, maybe, they filled it twice?
They may have. They're automatic fills.
I know, but...
Yeah, but they filled it up, we got slips for two fill-ups. He's referencing an issue with pricing, which we straightened out, but...
I just...
They're automatic fill-ups, so they may have come twice to fill it up, yeah.
Twice this month.
I don't know, but...
Well, I mean, there's two different fill-ups, there's 162.6 gallons and 167.6 gallons, and...
Well, I have to check into that, because...
Okay, that's a good one, you can, I just wonder if there was a mistake there, or they didn't pay last month's bill, or whatever.
So, I'll look at it here and see.
It's 16728 was the check number.
Yeah, right here.
And then...
167...
I got, well, still, all right, on Solid Waste Transfer Station, looks like they're buying off-road fuel. Last time I knew, they don't mix off-road fuel for winter operation, but you might want to check on that.
Okay. They don't.
They don't, so...
We have to add, we would have to add the...
Well, we should be running on-road fuel there during the winter months, as far as I'm concerned, because that is pre-mixed.
Okay, okay.
Just for a heads up. And I got to go to another page. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I apologize.
Page number four on, is 16738, it's the fuel is oil and propane. Looks like a GA. How come we're not using our own oil company because we pay less money if we're giving towns money away? How come we're not using...
Why we didn't go to Augusta Fuel?
Yes.
Well, that could very well be my mistake, and it could be something that I should have done wrong.
Well, and something's ringing my bell that we couldn't do that, but...
Well, the issue here, I'll have to ask about this, because the issue here is one that involves general assistance, and you're buying the fuel.
Right.
In support, it's a town support with individuals.
So I'm just wondering...
You generally aren't supposed to use town money for private purposes, but this in the...
This is a whole...
Mary, would you agree that this is like a problem?
The reason is, is that our fuel company won't deliver to a place or a home that they don't have their tag on.
Well, that's the other thing, but...
That's the other thing, is that, for instance, if we use Fabian, Fabian won't deliver unless they have their tag on it, so...
Except for the governor, except for the governor waived that requirement
That's right.
During this period of time. I mean, you're absolutely right, the governor waived...
I'm just wondering, we ought to check on that, see if we can do that.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm going to check on it.
Okay.
Something I should have caught, thank you.
And page number five, Dan McKenzie, it looks like Subway. I'm guessing they probably bought stuff for a meeting or something.
Yes, they, that was after a fire.
That's okay, that's good.
And that question answered?
Yep. Page number six, New England Salt, again. And this may be, I'll ask this question after, I'm fine with that. I'll ask you when you do your stuff. I want a couple answers.
On the New England Salt, what circuit is that?
No, it's fine, you're fine. I want to know how many loads that we've used this year.
1675.
Oh, I've got information on that in my office, but we can, I can give you that.
Yep, that's fine. And I think that's all ahead. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, I think so.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody?
I think I got everything we were talking about. We picked up the same thing.
They didn't get the chair.
I saw the chair, but...
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Four, nothing, four other.
Thank you.
All right, town manager.
Okay, just some quick updates for you. We talked about property foreclosures last week at the last board meeting, and there were four in a band, right, that had to be redressed. Two of those, one had paid prior to that meeting, and then we had another one, Ernie was able to discover the owner of that property, and that was paid, so that means two properties left. You asked me to send letters out to them, letting them know that the board meeting after the town meeting was when the board was going to decide on these. I sent those letters, and actually, I'm going to be contacting, I've already talked to one person, I'm going to be contacting the other person, it's hard to get a hold of this couple on the indoor way. They really don't want to come to the, well, I'm knocking the door, and I hear, you know, but they just don't come to the door. That's right, I left messages and stuff. I haven't received a return receipt on my registered mail. But I think that they, there's ways that we can help that issue, and so I'm looking into that as well.
Thank you.
And the other one is the commercial property down here, and I just don't know how that's going to turn out, other than we should talk to him, and we told him, and...
Nothing else you can do, we've done more than we need to.
That's right.
So both, we'll be able to communicate to both of these people that they haven't...
I've already done that, but I will be talking to them personally again, and the one couple.
Yeah.
We agreed for the meeting after town meeting, and we have to take action.
The spectrum issue with the turning off the phone at the transfer station and all that, I gave you a little bit of information on that last week. We're still working on that, plus I've asked them to go back through the entire year 2017 to every since, they changed billing procedures, which caused this problem to magnify, to when they had to close down that one phone, and they were trying to close down other towns. So I've asked them to go back, make sure that all of our checks are actually cash applied to our bill, and that we don't have to ever recover the late fees that we can pay. We've been working on this issue since July, and we finally got a hold of the guy ahead of the town manager for us, so, love that person. The newsletters do out by the end of the week. We've taken some suggestions on formatting and stuff from the communications group, but I've got that policy, I've got to bring it forward, I just haven't had the chance to finalize it. But really good input from these folks that gave us some stuff that's going to be going into this newsletter that'll kind of make it more informational, put out information, and easier to read. One of the things that was suggested was to highlight some of the, since the previous newsletter, highlight some of the issues that have gone on in the board meeting, what were some big decisions, so we've done that, things like that. Board of Appeals is currently working on an ordinance for their operations, as you know, they've been working on, you know, previous shoreline zoning or whatever, they built that structure back in the seventies or pre-seventies for the Board of Appeals, talking to Betty See, Becksey, not T. See, not Betty See. She had thought that might be better to recharter that organization, that Board of Appeals, with an ordinance so that they could better spell out what they would like to do, so they're working on that. Mike Hayner was the chair back then. He took, he was voted last, last meeting, that's last Board of Appeals meeting. The annual appeal, the annual report was out last Friday. We, I think Mary and whoever else took the time to review it, there were lots of suggestions, there were lots of good comments, I appreciate all those comments, and we think it's a good report. Will there be issues that come up with it, maybe? But we're looking to improve that year to year to year, and the folks did a great job on it. Cheryl Mitchell, the new town clerk, the folks that worked on it in the office, I really appreciate their hard work. We have, I talked about the $4,000 penalty received, but this, we were not making any headway with the auto shop on Knolls Road. I sent that to the legal for action, and he's going to send them a letter taking the court of justice, and I've said make sure that we recoup all our expenditures on that. We talked to them, and we tried to get them to talk to us, let me put it that way. There is a growing issue on beach lot number three, I'm sure you've heard that before, but there's an individual that is seriously looking at all of the problems down there and the permit approval process, and he's asked, may have our co-enforcement officer to review what was done down there in terms of permit approval. Gary did, sent him a letter, and he talked to me, did he, the individual talked to me today, and is asking that we send that letter and communication that he made, sort of about that violations that his engineer believes occurred during the permitting process, to the attorney, so I'm going to review that and look at that. We may do that and move forward in that way. And that, I believe, is it for right now.
I have one thing that I want to give him before. I just would like to break down those numbers.
Oh, yeah, I'll give you all that now.
What is it?
In fact, I, we used to report this stuff in the town report, maybe next year that's going to be reported.
What is it?
It's a request for wages, insurance, and all that, just to break down all the benefits.
What lot are you talking about? Is it up in Belgrade Lakes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the beach lot three down on Lake Shore Drive.
So...
It's a house where...
I know where it is, but somebody's bringing this back to life, back to life again?
Well, it's not being brought back. He's continuing the argument in court that he's been on since 2012, when that whole thing was approved. It was an ongoing court issue. Remember I talked to you about that?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just wondering, so now the town's going to be involved in this?
Well, there was a permit approval process through the boards, so the town is involved. I mean, to the extent, it depends. The claim is that their shoreline, shoreline zoning violations, the permission have been issued because of that, the shoreline zoning issues, and some other things, so...
Is the part about several, too many people being there, is that part of it, too?
No, that's not part of it, because that's a separate issue. That's an issue that the board and/or the planning board may have to get involved with at some point in, in the sense that there may be environmental impacts resulting from that kind of use of the single-family residents. That shouldn't be allowed, but right now it's allowed. And we have lots of properties that raten during the summertime that have those things going on. There's a lot of towns that are looking at this issue of vacation rental by owner, Airbnb or whatever, that, where they see problems, so there's a lot of towns doing stuff on this, when I say, but that's important area and all of that.
I just hope this person isn't being singled out. It seems like it's always that place.
Well, that place, it's...
And it's been there, it got approved, now we're going to go back and...
Well, the individual is making the argument that his property rights were impacted as a result of the approval of that permit, that in fact, beach lot three was owned entirely, was available, the entire lot was available for the rest of the Clovis subdivision owners in the lot. He's arguing that because the house was built there, there's a fence around, they've been essentially restricted from the use of that lot, where they used to go and picnic and all of that, and furthermore, that there's, they have a static argument, there's a whole, I got a case that I was able to read.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm just, I'm just hoping that we're not...
But there's a whole series of issues that they're arguing that were, his rights, his property rights were essentially taken away as a result of that approval.
Okay, I'll leave it at that for now. I just, I just want to make sure we're not singling out people.
I don't think he's singing out anyone.
No, I'm talking about the town of Belgrade. I don't care what that guy's doing, he can go after the, whatever he wants.
It's not the town that's doing this.
Well, he's getting the town involved. That's already a done deal, as far as I'm concerned, but...
For the town, yeah, and the town when they issued the permit at that time.
That's right, it was a done deal then.
Probably, just my thought would be is we're probably better off to work with this, because the gentleman probably could come back and sue the town, because we issued permits when we weren't allowed to.
Well, that's his view, but that's right.
So I don't know, I guess if we kind of work with it, we know where we stand, we can get all the issues, or maybe make sure that we think about it.
Sorry, anything else, Dennis?
That's all I have.
Anything, any, what's the... Anybody want to, Jerry?
I'll make that motion second.
Made and seconded, Jerry? All those in favor? All right. Thank you, thank you all. Jack, you want to copy that contract? There you are.
Please.
Just happened to have a sheriff. Just happened to have a sample.